You're important today.
That's what we're waiting on you.
Wow, I'm so nervous. I hate when Steve's not here because I have to go first.
Okay, welcome to the March 13th edition of the Rydebrook Zoning Board of Appeals. With us today, we have three of the five board members with us, which means that each application has the option to postpone their hearing until our next meeting, or they can continue. But in order to get a successful decision on the variance, you need to have a unanimous vote of all three of the members. So you can discuss that with your architect or representative as to whether or not you want to continue. You can make that decision up until the time that you are called to the front desk to make your presentation. With us today, we also have Village Council Drew Gammels, and this is going to be her, possibly her inaugural, not inaugural, but her parting voyage from village activity.
Not even a penultimate?
No, no. We also have Acting Building Inspector Steve Fuse and Board of Trustees Liaison David Heiser. Tonight, we have two applications. The first application is item number ZBA 23-002, Jamie Billington and Cara Billington, 6 Bonwit Road, construct front and rear two-story additions, new covered front porch, new deck, and interior alterations. Please come forward, present your name, address, and the nature, yes, and the nature of your... Steve, is there a easel that we can put that on?
You can prop it up.
Then we can see you.
And you won't be able to see me.
Yeah, that's all right. We'll wait a moment, and it's easy to access.
So it may not be Drew's last?
She handed in her resignation. She's going to River People.
Without, to where?
River People.
What's that?
Environmental justice.
But you didn't call to tell me.
I wanted to tell them one in person.
Wow, but I wasn't prepared. Wow.
It was the bourbon that did it.
Oh, yeah, really? Then you're welcome.
Can you, Drew, can you hand them the hand mic, please? No makeup tonight.
Hello? Okay. Sorry. Which way are you going? Yeah. Oh. I could probably just hold this. No, all right, I'll just hold on to it, and we'll see how it goes.
Maybe it should be Drew's punishment.
Stand and hold it.
Okay. My name is Evan Sikovsky. I'm the architect for this project. This is a renovation addition project at 6 Bonwit, where we're taking an existing split-level home and adding a second level over the existing one-story side of the house. We're also, well, we're removing and then replacing some existing construction on both the front and back of the house, building that out a little bit in both of those places, adding a front porch. What we're requesting tonight is a variance for gross floor area. We're proposing to exceed that existing floor area, or that, excuse me, that allowable floor area by 498 square feet. Basically, we have young family homeowners who are looking to create a modern living space for themselves that's functional for their family, for their growing family. Sometimes they have family members who stay with them to help watch their children, and so they are looking for a space that works for them. We are, one thing that we, I wanted to point out that we have done, so that we didn't end up coming in here asking for two variances, is that they were previously over on their existing allowable impervious coverage. We've actually removed a fair amount of impervious coverage to bring that into compliance. And, you know, we think that based on what they are trying to achieve, that this is the least amount that we could do. We explored some other options in the design phase that just weren't as practical.
Could you kind of address those options that you rejected?
Sure. I mean, they were, I don't have any of them to show you, but they were...
But you could just speak to them.
Yeah, so we explored some options where we had a smaller scale for that second floor, part of the addition with the master suite in particular. And it just, it reduced, first of all, I don't think that we were in a position where we would have been asking for no variance. Maybe we would have been in a 200-square-foot variance sort of position, but it just was really not functional as far as the interior space was concerned. There were some oddities to the layout that were solved by increasing, just in terms of how you accessed that bedroom space and the bathroom space. You were like walking through the closet, and it just, it was a little impractical.
Because obviously, the concern is that you're currently asking, I didn't exactly do the math, but around 17 or 18 percent.
I'm close to 15.
About 15?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm good at math.
15 to 17 percent above the, well, 3,000, you're asking for about, what was it?
Close to 5.
Close to 5, yeah.
Yep. I mean, that's fairly substantial.
I mean, we feel that it's reasonable and actually comparable to several other houses that have received variances in the neighborhood, including the neighboring house, which is, I actually have some images of that, but it's, I think that's 23 Bonwit, or not Bonwit, Elm Hill, which is on the corner of Bonwit and Elm Hill. 23 Elm Hill.
Is that the one that's still standing?
It's, well, it's right next door to their house. It was approved in 2019, and that was actually, they were allowed 543-square-foot variance to go from permitted 3403 up to 3946. That's right next door. And there are other homes in the area. There was another one that was on Old Oak that's been approved for about the same, and that was a smaller house, so maybe more on the scale of what you're talking about. This was 2014, for Old Oak, was branded a 626-square-foot gross-floor-area variance, where their permitted was 2935. And then the other one that I wanted to point out, even though this wasn't a variance, is that at 5 Bonwit, which is diagonally across the street from them, that happens to be an oversized lot. But the point being that this is not unreasonable for the scale of the street and the neighborhood where that house is, sits at 4, over 4,000 square feet.
But ultimately, the question is, what can you do to reduce it and still have it workable?
Well, I think we would have to take away some of the desired program for the owner.
Yeah, possibly.
There would be really, there would be really no other way than to say you can't have, you know, this bedroom space up there, or, you know, something would have to be eliminated completely, in my opinion.
Possibly, right.
Yeah.
So what can be eliminated?
No, can I just say something to you first? What is being added that's not there, so I can get that first, if you don't... What is being added first, because then we could look at, you know, the purpose? Because the thing that I always wonder when I read the application is, why do we often mix up or conflate modern and larger, right? So that was in the application. So when I read that, it just hit me, because, you know, I've seen some houses that were very small in a place that I was looking, and they took houses from like 1870, you know, old historic houses, and they, you can't do a lot with them because of the size, right, in the historic district of this area. But interior-wise, they made them very modern. So, you know, I kind of wonder, you can be modern, very modern, and not, but I see, I saw the open living room, the kit, you know, so I saw that, so that's the one thing...
I mean, I think just generally, I mean, and I hope that you would agree with this, is that there's a general expectation for perhaps people who are first moving into this area, to Westchester County in general, in terms of what kind of home am I going to have here? And I think that, you know, there are, these, you know, the limitations on what we're maybe constraining this particular lot, you know, are restrictive in that regard, in terms of what you could get, maybe even a block away in the same neighborhood, right, in our neighborhood in Rydebrook here. You know, people, people, when they buy their homes, they don't, you know, they don't know these numbers until they're ready to file their project. They just, they just say, you know, I think that this house has potential, I could do X, Y, and Z with it, and it's going to be suited for my needs and what my expectations are for a house in this community and...
So I threw off the question with my comment. So I just had to throw that out there because it was, because since I read it, it's just been, I did not want to forget the modern with the, you know, size is...
And I think there are certain types of people, though, who would look at a particular house like that, a more historic home, and say, I like that this is smaller, and that's what, and that's what appeals to me.
Right. But you make it modern, so that's, that's a concern I have, but...
I mean, maybe the use of the word "modern" was a little broad here, but...
But, but, so what was added, so then we can go to Joel's question. I'm sorry, Joel.
No, 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 that's a good way to do it.
So we added, we are adding two bedrooms, including the creation of the new master suite. Actually, is that right, Cara? Is it two bedrooms that we're increasing?
We're keeping, so right now, we're four bedrooms. We're keeping four bedrooms, we're adding an extra office as...
Right, one of those bedrooms is converting to an office, that's what I was... Yep, so we're converting one of the existing bedrooms to an office, so it's really, it's really a single bedroom being added, but one of the bedrooms is being relocated to accommodate...
So you're going to have six rooms, one of which you're going to use as an office?
It's a very small space, though it's not really sized to be a bedroom. I mean, maybe, maybe for like a guest...
All right, so five bedrooms, one office?
Yeah.
Four bedrooms and an office.
No, yeah, it's, it's two upstairs and two on the main floor.
I thought you said you currently have four, and you're adding two.
No, there are currently, there are currently three on the main floor. Yeah, yeah, sorry about that.
So you're currently three bedrooms, total?
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, we have four bedrooms, I can, I'm sorry, can you just come and use the microphone?
Yes.
As preferred.
Oftentimes, oftentimes...
There you go.
Cara Billington, homeowner of 6 Bonwit. So right now, we are four bedrooms, three bathrooms, with one on the main floor and three on the upper floor.
And you're adding?
And we are adding, we're taking away the bedroom downstairs and making that part of the entryway and decreasing that size to make an entryway. And then we are adding, so it's same number of bedrooms, we're just reconfiguring the house, where it's still going to be four bedrooms, and now we're going to have an office. I think one of the bigger things is that we have a, we have a very young son, my mother-in-law is moving in with us, and so we wanted to keep the four bedrooms, to keep the value of the house where it is, and then both myself and my wife work from home full-time, and so having a dedicated workspace for myself, as well as partly a guest bedroom, partly another office for my wife, and then having a full bedroom for my mother-in-law, who's moving in with us, and then having my son's bedroom upstairs with our bedroom as well. So that was the biggest thing, was keeping my young son and us on the same floor was very important to our family. You know, he is young, and I'm sure we won't always love him being next door to us, but for now, for now, it'll be okay.
When did you move into the house?
About a year and a half, two years ago now.
Okay. One of the things that we encountered is that oftentimes brokers would say, when you're trying to sell the house, oh, you can very easily blow the doors off and go up and up and up, and then you find out that there's a variance involved, you know, down, down the road. But that's oftentimes the surprise that one gets. Normally, when you move into Rydebrook, you're surprised with the bulk standards and all the joy that you have in moving through, you know, the process, but that's oftentimes the surprise that you get, that, oh, by the way, it's not going to be that easy.
Yeah, and we find it to be extremely worth it. Again, like, our neighborhood is just like beyond spectacular. We love our neighbors, and, you know, we wouldn't want to live anywhere else, and so certainly, instead of moving, you know, we figured we might as well just take the house that we have and keep the neighbors and parks and things like that that we love. I mean, we are a huge part of the community, and we wouldn't want to live anywhere else, so I'd certainly appreciate that it's so nice because of these rules as well.
Now, I see you're adding, look at the plans, a new deck?
Yes, we're relocating.
Taking down an existing deck, though, that's...
Same size?
Yeah, it's pretty much, I...
Where did you remove the impervious surface?
I just wanted to see if there's any difference in the deck.
The existing deck was over here, it was kind of filled out to, almost to the line there, so the deck is on here. The existing was 261, it's increasing slightly to 316, so what is that?
What impervious did you remove?
So there is currently patio space on the side of the house here, so all of that is coming out, and that's why, so the deck is really kind of like a one-for-one replacement. It was here, and now it's moving here.
Were you aware that this house has been expanded already? Were you aware of that as the architect?
I, well, I know that there have been some plans filed in the past, and I know that there were some attempts to expand it.
Quite a while, quite a while ago.
I don't think actually, though, happened.
I think that right-hand side above the garage was added years ago.
So there's no, yeah, so I've seen those plans, so I don't believe that project actually happened. So the only, because the, the house on the second floor is the original layout, in terms of, you know, the split-level layout. There was, like, there was no, there was no work in terms of adding onto the back of the house there. The only work that had been, you go to the...
There was no need for a variance, but...
Yeah, the, what they, the only part that looked perhaps like an add-on was on the first floor where the kitchen bumps out in that deck area. I know this is a little smaller, but this is all the existing and the demolition right here. But you can see, this, the existing house is just, you know, your typical split-level home, and I don't believe that it appears to me like, like, here's that existing second floor. It's pretty, pretty standard for what I see in terms of the split levels and...
Is there a roof over the new deck?
No.
Okay.
There's a pergola proposed.
Okay, because I saw something on the plan.
Hopefully with a retractable screen and a budget permitting.
One of the, one of the interesting things about this house in this area is that in our last meeting, we talked about how the splits and the raised ranches are evolving into something much more, and this is just another example, you know, currently of that trend. As you stroll around the area, you'll notice that you have that admixture of houses that have been substantially added to and those that haven't been added to yet. But this again is, raises the question of, do we continue bumping the bulk standards up, you know, on a variance-by-variance basis, or do we address the issue of people wanting larger homes? You're in an R12, and you're about 750 feet over the minimum lot size, so, you know, you're not pushing to super max, but you are adding a substantial quantitative variance. And our job is to balance the needs of the owner and what they are asking for versus, you know, having to grant a variance.
And doing variances every time is not necessarily the best way to be doing it. The question then, should there be something done within the village, as we're saying, to change the current rules, but...
I'm a village resident, I don't know if you knew that.
Yes.
For selfish reasons, perhaps, but I certainly would support having a little more bulk.
Yeah, and by, and by the way, that 17 percent, I know where you got that from, the deck increased 17 percent, so it doesn't seem like a lot in square footage, but as a percentage, it's kind of large-ish. So I'm not really sure what the deck was before, so...
If you include the deck in the gross floor area, though?
No, 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 but can you, can you just give the deck, I'm just curious, because, you know, I want to look at everything holistically.
Yeah, and in terms of...
The initial deck was...
The initial deck was 261 square feet, which is 2 percent of the lot area, so we're allowed 4 percent, and we're going to 316 square feet, which is 2.4 percent.
Right, okay.
So it's, I mean, it's an increase, but it's a small one, in my opinion.
Right, right, right. I was just wondering the dimensions of the deck, if you had them handy.
Drew, do we have any, I don't, I didn't see any letters coming in either, for, or again.
I have not received any letters for...
Signs were posted?
Signs were posted, they're up there right now, actually.
Yes, yes, yes.
So this is 21 foot 3 wide and 14 foot 1 deep.
Yeah, I'm surprised that, you know, considering this, the size of what you're doing, and needless to say, the cost of what you're doing, it's a massive construction, because when people started moving into Rydebrook, they weren't paying that much for the entire house, and the lot. So, you know, it is, you're fortunate that you're not the first, and others have done this before. It just puts enormous pressure on, on the board, you know, to justify each and every request, and that's why we're asking, is this the smallest possible variance that will meet the applicant's needs? And, you know, the degree to which you can document and support that is helpful to your cause, you know, and so...
I kind of feel, though, it's, you know, we're the zoning board, right? Obviously, we grant variances, or we don't. But I feel more often lately, I'm not really comfortable with, is we become a de facto...
Legislature.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
That's my, that's my ultimate concern. We're doing, in a sense, what the village arguably should be doing in its own rules, and/or we're bypassing the village's rules on a continual basis.
Yeah, and I have no doubt, and I have no doubt that this type of house would be not even like, like a question with today's more modern society, right? More people working from home, you want more room, God bless those that have in-laws that they don't mind, that, that, that...
I didn't say that.
I didn't mean you, I meant other people, but, but that, that, you know, people living longer, you know, which is kind of nice, right?
Usually.
Yeah, usually. And coming back home in a place, you know, I don't know how old, you know, and it doesn't, that doesn't matter, but, but, but I know someone who's caring for somebody at home, and we see a lot of those, and, and so, you know, I wish this wasn't something that we'd have to start, you know, making decisions on, because this is a large thing. Now, you kind of threw me off with, you know, we've done it here and there, which...
Everyone has to stand on its own.
Correct, right. So I don't know what the reasons were for those, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know, we only look at this, and it's kind of challenging, because on the one hand, you know, we want to grant these things. I think on the other hand, we kind of don't want to write a blank check, so it's, it's really challenging, you know, you know, here.
And I feel like I, you know, as a person who designed this and laid it out, I mean, I can appreciate that, and even though, you know, you're, you're saying that you do feel that this is somewhat substantial, I do feel like that was in mind the whole time, knowing that, you know, okay, we're in a position where we know from the get-go that to make this house work for them, we're probably going to be exceeding this number, so keeping that to a minimum, you know, for example, on the, on the second floor, I mean, you know, and this honestly would have been excessive, in my opinion, but, I skipped a sheet, I think, but, you know, with the bedroom itself, you know, we, we've held that back from the perimeter wall. It's not, the, the second floor walls here are set back on all three sides of that bedroom, just so that it wasn't, I mean, there was no reason to go to the maximum envelope of the building.
But here's my question again to you. Making, keeping it functional, what can be done to reduce it somewhat?
I mean, the layouts that we looked at, maybe, like I said, saved 150 square feet, something like that, and it just, it just created much more awkwardness in this area, where you're coming off the stair, it's narrow here, you know, you have to accommodate this bedroom, which they need, and, you know, how do you get to a bathroom and make a closet that, that actually works where it's just, you know, cramped and you're, you know, and so I, I don't know, in my, my opinion, we made this as efficient as we could to still make it functional. I, you know, the only way that you, you get under the maximum allowable number of numbers is to truly eliminate something in here. It's not going to be just by shrinking things down.
You know, it's funny, I just, this house reminds me of something I just saw yesterday. And where I grew up, it was quarter acre lots. The house that I grew up in was sold, and then sold again, and my sister sent me this picture of in construction, and this is what it looks like. But those house, like, but on these properties that are bigger, you can, should I say that, you could handle, right? You can handle this size. I think on the property, it doesn't feel like you're tight. Those houses...
Are on top of each other.
Right, I mean, I feel like, and it's kind of weird, it's just, it looks, I'm looking at them like, you know, you're not that far from your neighbor, and yet it's all house. And it's, and it's kind of like, I'm not knocking it, it's kind of like Red Roof, but even on steroids, meaning, meaning it's all house, very little yard, but it's even worse. And I looked at that, and that's what reminds me, but this, it's like, you can wear this house, right? I don't feel it's, it's, you know, I'm a little uncomfortable with the size for our job.
But not the...
But, 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 right, right, but aesthetically, I'm not feeling like, I don't feel claust, and I'm claustrophobic a little bit, I don't feel like claustrophobic even on a lot, but some houses you do.
Now, it, I don't think there's an issue with it fitting the house, fitting the neighborhood, fitting the community. That, I don't think is our issue at all. The our issue, to the extent any exists, is really our role. It's a, it's a, it's a percentage-wise large variance, and the fact of our role on a continual basis, or it's become a continual basis, bypassing the village rules.
Right, you're right. So if we grant it, then someone comes in and says, you know, not only at 5 Old Oak or this one, now it's 6 Bonwit, now you've added another one on where we've kind of, again, made our own rules, and it's...
Well, you know, next month, Evan and John are going to come before us and say, you just granted this 500 variance for this house on 6 Bonwit, and it's such and such, just as he did before. You know, just, you repeat it exactly, and we're going to hear that time and time again, because you folks are effective architects, and people are finding out that to blow the doors off the split level, you know, go to these guys, and they'll say the exact same thing. And it's our job to make sure that's really the best that you can do, given the restraints that we have.
I am going to ask, as we have a board of trustee representative here, that it's something which, in my own personal opinion, it's time to be brought up to the board, that maybe it is time to revamp the bulk standards.
Or at least reevaluate.
Reevaluate.
Right, right.
Reevaluate. It's time to look at it again, and if we're doing this on a continual basis, which as you've seen, and we are, maybe it's time.
My suggestion would be to have Don as your chair to make that suggestion to Chris Bradbury and/or Jason Clark.
Will do, yeah, will do.
That being said...
All right.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions of the architect and the applicant?
No.
No, there being none. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of the application? Anyone want to speak against the application? And since none have been submitted, a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Okay, seconded, okay, the public hearing is closed. Public hearing is now officially closed. So the board is now going to discuss, you know, the situation.
Or you want us to stay here?
You could take it away.
Okay.
Before it falls.
Holding you with a microphone.
Yeah. The, I think that we all had the same, same concerns. It is a substantial quantitative variance, and it is self-created, but I don't think it's going to adversely affect the character, because it fits in with a lot of the other houses.
Okay, what I'm going to say is, we've, frankly, we've been granting them, I don't personally see a reason necessarily not to, other than the concern that we put out. That concern, if you're going to take this to the board of trustees, and for future reference, based upon their, what they do or don't do on that recommendation, that's going to give us some guideline, I think, in the future as to, should we be as lenient as we've been being, or should we abide more to the rule, you know, what's being laid out, because the board of trustees has made it clear that they're not interested in bumping up the standards.
So if, if...
Well, we're still limited by the five... That concern, if you're going to take this to the board of trustees and for future reference, based upon their, what, what they do or don't do on that recommendation, that's going to give us some guideline, I think, in the future as to, should we be as lenient as we've been being? Or should we abide more to the, the rule, you know, what's being laid out? Because the board of trustees has made it clear that they're not interested in bumping up the standards.
So if, if.
Well, we're still limited by the five factors.
Right.
Right, 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 right.
But, but if we are liberal with granting the variances.
Generous.
Generous. Then, and the board comes back and says, you know what, yes, then it's good, right? We've done, kind of following the thing. If they come back and say, you know what, this is what the town was meant to be.
That's, it doesn't affect this one?
No, 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 it doesn't, right, but going forward, so someone gets in.
Yes.
Under the wire, kind of thing.
Basically, basically.
Right, because we really don't have.
It's going to tell us, it's going to give us direction as to how the board of trustees basically wants us to proceed in the future.
Well, the case that I am going to make, and I want to just bring it here since I don't want to open the discussion again later, is that when the comprehensive plan and the zoning regulations were put in place, it was a different world. Ry Brook was a different, in a different world.
No question.
Pre-COVID, things were very, very different. They bumped up some R twenties, R twenty-fives because of McMansions. But now the issue of people moving into Ry Brook wanting a master suite, an en suite, a, an entertainment room and an exercise room. And that cannot be accommodated typically in a, in a raised ranch or a split without substantial increases. So essentially, what, what I think we have to do is to say, make the case that we feel the world has changed. And should Ry Brook reflect those changes in its bulk standards? That's all.
And, and to make, and to make it clear that the decision is going to, will in the future likely to affect how generous we may or may not be going forward.
Right, but should that be our responsibility?
No, it's their call.
It's their call, but it's a guideline.
It enforces.
Because you have, you know, you have certain laws that strict liability, right? And you say, period, this is it, you know, even if you think it's wrong. And if you're a judge and you want to follow a law, you might say, you know, I think this law is so unfair.
But the law, you still got to follow it.
Right, right, and then someone else has to change it legislatively, not the judge sitting there, whoever one agrees it's wrong.
But there are, but there are certain laws where you have a, a little slack as to how you interpret it.
Right.
And when the legislature comes back and gives additional guidelines, that tells, that tells the judge how, how generous or how, whatever you want to call it, to be in interpreting it.
Right, well fortunately for people that have come before us.
We're getting, we're getting, yeah, we're getting.
But no, no, but no, but what I guess is you can argue either way, but.
You know, I, I think in this case, there are no environmental issues.
I, I agree.
There's no character issues and they've done, they've done a reasonable job in reducing it.
Yeah.
Right, always bringing it back to the.
The five factors.
Exactly, which is, yeah.
Five factors. So those are basically my interpretation of the five.
I agree.
Let me go ahead.
Which is why I was asking him about reducing it and, and I don't think he really can.
Right.
Have it functional.
Whereas the application has been made to the zoning board by Jamie Billington and Cara Billington, the applicants, for gross floor area variance of four hundred ninety-eight square feet, where the maximum allowable gross floor, floor area is three thousand twenty-three square feet pursuant to Village Code two fifty dash twenty-two, Section E, in connection with the proposed front and rear two-story additions, new covered front porch, new deck and interior alterations on property located at six Bonwit Road in an R twelve zoning district on the side, the south side of Bonwit Road, approximately seventy-five feet from the intersection of Elm Hill Drive and Bonwit Road. Said premises being known and designated on the tax map of the village of Ry Brook as parcel ID one three five dot five zero dash one dash forty. And whereas a duly advertised public hearing was held on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. Whereas the public hearing was closed on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the proposed action is a type-two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. And accordingly, no further environmental review is required. Whereas the board from the application, after viewing the premises and neighborhood concerned, and upon considering each of the factors set forth at Section two fifty dash thirteen, Section G, Part B, Items two A through E of the Ry Brook Code, finds, one, the variance will not create an adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood. Two, the benefit the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicants to pursue. That does not require the variance. Three, the variance is quantitatively substantial, but not aesthetically substantial. Four, the variance will not create any adverse impacts to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And five, the need for the variance is self-created. Now therefore, be it resolved, what I said before, is provisionally granted on the following conditions. No permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicants have paid in full all application and consultant fees incurred by the village in connection with the review of this application. Okay, ready to go?
Yeah, I, I do have one question before you ask.
Yes.
I guess I could ask you, the house, they're not increasing the footprint, correct?
Very little. It's very little increase.
Right, just slightly, right.
Slightly, there is a footprint increase.
Okay.
Yeah. I looked at that too.
Okay.
Okay, Glenn?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Don, yes, okay, application approved. Three yeses, zero noes and two excuse. Congratulations, good luck. And you got to start within six, six months to start chopping away.
We'll be back here on Wednesday.
Okay, yep. The next application, ZBA twenty-three dash zero zero three, Ervin Gomez and Maria Gomez, fifty-nine South Bridge Street, construct a second-story addition over the existing two-car garage. I noticed, John, you were taking notes before.
Not me.
Well, I have no floor area tonight.
Okay.
We have a break from floor area.
But you did hear Glenn's comments though.
What?
You did, you did hear Glenn's comments about coming close.
Okay, we're here tonight, Gomez's are here too. To go, go for a variance for putting a room over the existing two-car garage? So let me show you the pictures.
I noticed there was a tarp over there today. Can you clarify that?
And the, and the pink thing on the door?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so Steve could probably better describe it, but they got to stop work order for starting the project. They needed to replace the roof on the garage because it was leaking. So somebody thought it was a good idea to expand at that point. But they needed a permit. So they started without a permit, Steve saw it and stopped them.
Can't exactly hide anything on South Ridge.
I thought you guys can't hide anything from Stephen, but.
Well, maybe on a backstreet, you have a better, better shot. All right, so that's, so. Okay, so we're proposing to put the room lining up with the existing garage. So we're going to do the front with two windows. And we're keeping the roof line the same, the back has windows just on the backyard. We didn't put any. Okay, now the side, we're, we have no windows but the existing garage windows that are there.
What, what are you putting on the side there anyway, facing the, the bush?
What do you mean by what are we putting?
That side of the garage area on the second floor?
Right, we're putting, no, we're putting no windows on the side.
Nothing, right? Just, just solid.
Just solid. We thought that would make sense since we're closer to the property line.
Oh, you'll have raccoons jumping through the window there.
Was there a pretty tall tree that was?
There's a whole row of hedges on that side, so you really.
Yeah, that's what I thought, right, okay.
Right, I mean, right, that one, I think from the back you can see the, the hedges run, right, the, the hedges run across the whole.
So why does it change the side setback?
So you can see the hedge runs the whole length of the thing. It changes.
You're talking about not the, the height ratio?
Yeah, the, yeah.
The height setback is the, the line that cuts.
Yeah, he's talking about the other one.
The other one, why is that, why is the addition changing the, the single side setback?
It's existing non.
Oh, okay.
It's a single side yard, we're supposed to be six feet, and we're at four point two.
So the existing garage is at the four point two, though?
Yes, it's too close.
Okay, gotcha. So you're not bringing it closer, you're just.
No, we're just aligning with the existing non-conformity. And then the height setback is the angle line because we're too close, it cuts through. Although we're keeping it with a very shallow roof line, so we're trying to keep it as soft as we can keep it and kind of let with the house.
I think it's important that you're not actually adding to it and increasing the setback.
No, 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 we're just aligning with existing non-conformity.
Would that side setback be somewhere in the, in the bushes there? The actual property line?
The property line is four point two.
It would be in the middle.
Probably in the middle or maybe slightly over the other bushes, yes.
So if, if those bushes ever decided to go away, it would really be intrusive on the, on the side of the neighbor there, right?
I mean, you would notice that the houses are closer together, I guess, but the bushes weren't there, right?
Do you have any photo of the house next door?
I do.
Sorry.
That one. So the piece that's, that's there is actually, that's closer to the property line is, is a one-floor addition, like the two-part, two-floor is back further, so.
I'm sorry, clarify, the neighbor's house is?
That one.
This, this is the house of the neighbor. This is the house that's left of the garage. So you've got like a low piece and then the high piece. So the low piece is what's closer to the property line. So it's not like the two stories up against two story. But you never know, somebody adds to the other piece. I think off the building across the street. But you can tell like from there, like it's all, right, the bushes are probably bigger than four point. Right, bushes look bigger.
So just so I'm clear, when you go back to the picture with the red car, is that the, is it the Gomez's driveway?
This is the Gomez's driveway.
Yeah, there was another, oh, okay, because I want to see with the, with the house, the two. I just want to see that again. Were you circled it?
Oh, oh, that one was.
With the neighbors, right?
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so, okay, so, oh, I, I thought it was right.
That was the back of my black car.
Correct, oh, I see, okay, got it, okay, now I got the configuration, okay.
So, John, would, there's nothing else you could do to this? I mean, I understand why they want, why they want that extra room to make the second-floor apartment more desirable.
Right.
But.
I mean, I mean, in theory, we could, you know, pull the second-floor addition back, you know, to be six feet off the property line, right? And then the garage, you know, it's like you have the two-car garage, two feet, and then the wall's back further.
How do you want access to that addition, just through the garage only, or?
No, it's the second floor. You got two.
There's an apartment up there.
It's a two, I'm sorry, it's also a two-family house.
Yeah, oh, okay.
So it's the second-floor unit, so you, it, it's connected from the kitchen.
What's the square footage of that second apartment upstairs? Do you have it offhand?
Off the top of my head, I do not have the square footage of it.
And the square footage of what you're adding is what? The, the room that you're adding?
It's like four hundred square feet, we're under FAR.
Twenty by twenty, then?
It's like, it's basically, I think it's like nineteen by twenty-something. So it's like, my drawing actually probably has it, right?
I thought I saw it on there, but.
If I just subtract that. If you subtract my, what, what's the difference on square footage on the chart?
See, it's three hundred, Steve?
I blow up my chart and take down my phone.
That's, so that's going to be one big room?
This is one, yeah. It's going to be like the eating area, the kitchen, or like kind of kitchen, family, just kind of space. Because the part, the kitchen's small and the living room's small.
So essentially, if that's the garage downstairs, the size of the first floor is actually the size of the second floor now?
First floor has the piece to the right side of the house that the second floor doesn't have.
Okay.
So the first floor is actually slightly bigger than the second floor. And now the second floor would be slightly bigger than the first because the garage, I believe, is bigger than the piece that's on the right side of the house, that's the only one.
Okay. And have you heard from the neighbor on that side?
We haven't heard from, there have been no letters and the sign was out and the, all the letters were mailed, so.
Yeah, I don't see any letters in the file and the signage is up. Okay, all right. Do you have any questions of?
No.
No.
No, okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in favor of the application? Anyone want to speak against the application? A motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Public hearing is closed. Okay, this is either a yes or a no, you know, because.
I don't have, honestly, I don't have a problem. To me, the, the big issue is that it's not, it's not creating the side setback issue. It already existed and he's building on top of it. You know, it was there already.
Yeah. And I would have a harder time denying this one in that it's, you know, it's a smaller piece of property. He's not expanding it, you know, it's.
Yeah.
You know, the, the next door is lower a little bit. It's got everything that kind of allows us to look at this in grand of variance, in my opinion. The hedges are there for the time being and, and, and I don't think, and there's no window he didn't put there for a reason, right?
You'd, you'd see bushes. If there was a window, you'd see bushes.
No, but if they were gone or they trimmed them, then you'd see the house. So do we know it's like one, it's a two-family, one owned and one rented, or?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I think it has to be. That's owner-occupied, John.
Probably of both, or?
Yeah, yeah.
It's owner-occupied and that the second-floor unit is the one they live in. The Gomez's.
And they rent out the.
First floor.
Right, okay.
Okay, yeah, good. So they're making it more comfortable for themselves. Please come forward. Yep. Introduce yourself, please.
All right, this one?
Yeah, just say your name.
Yes, I'm Ervin Gomez, and nice to meet you, everyone. Thanks God I be here in this property twenty-five year, which I feel so happy to pay my taxes. So I'm happy to be in this town. And now I needing a space because my kids already grow. So I'm leaving in the second floor, so which is very, very small. So before I didn't do it because, you know, the money, expenses. But now I feel more comfortable to do it. And especially, I bought in this house like you mentioned before. The realtors say something to the buyers, but later on, we found hard times. This house I bought it for two-family house, which I fix a lot. I, you know, I fix it because I like the place, I like the town, and, and I'm happy to be here. So that's why I'm trying to, if you let me to, to do it, thank you, I appreciate. To have a little more space to enjoy, especially my kids, they grow. space to enjoy, especially my kids, they growing like you see now, uh...
So nervy, these kids.
Yeah, so, appreciate any help you can, you can do for, for us.
You could, you could help us by saying to the television audience that if you decide to make an addition, uh, check with the, check with the village first.
Public service announcement.
It's a public service announcement.
And pardon for, too, but I was, was leaking, and I was worried, and I'm start to do it, you know, I'm.
You got carried away.
Yep, okay.
Pardon to the law, and pardon to you.
That's right, my eight years of Spanish comes to, comes to good use. All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, okay, the, uh...
We all learned that a tarp doesn't hold water out real well. People watching on TV.
Yep, yep. Uh, okay, uh, the variance would be quantitatively substantial, self-created?
Yes.
No environmental issues, no character issues, and you believe that chopping off a little bit will not add anything to the party?
No.
Okay, let me go ahead with the, uh... Whereas an application has been made to the zoning board by Ervin Gomez and Maria Gomez, the applicants, for one, a single-side yard setback variance of 1.8 feet, where the minimum required single-side yard setback is six feet pursuant to Village Code 250 dash 25, Section G, Part 2, Item 8. And secondly, a side height setback ratio variance of 1.47, where the maximum allowable side height setback is 4.0 pursuant to Village Code 250 dash 25, Section I, Item 2, in connection with the construction of a second-story addition over the existing two-car garage on property located at 59 South Ridge Street, situated on the southeast side of South Ridge Street, approximately 275 feet from the intersection of Westchester Avenue and South Ridge Street. Designated and shown on the most current tax map as parcel ID 135 dot 83 dash 1 dash 62. Whereas a duly advertised public hearing was held on March 13th, 2023, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given such opportunity. Whereas the public hearing was closed on March 13th, 2023. Whereas the proposed action is a type-two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. Whereas the board from the application after viewing the premises and neighborhood concern, and upon considering each of the factors, set forth at Section 250 dash 13, Section G, Part 2, Items 2A through E of the Ry Brook Code, finds the variances will not create an adverse impact to the character of the neighborhood. Second, the benefit the applicant seeks cannot be achieved through another method feasible for the applicants to pursue. That does not require the variances. Three, the variances are quantitatively numerically substantial but not aesthetically substantial. Four, the variances will not create any adverse impacts to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And five, the need for the variance is self-created. Now therefore be it resolved, as what I said before, is hereby provisionally granted on the following conditions. No permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicants have paid in full all application and consultant fees incurred by the village in connection with the review of this application. Drew, by the way, I don't think I signed the last one, did I? I just caught myself. No, I did not, thank you. Uh, okay, Steve is excused, and Jamie is excused. Okay, that leaves us, Glenn?
Yes.
Okay, Joel?
Yes.
Don, yes, application approved, three yeses, zero nays, two excuse. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good, John. John, you want to write that letter for me to the Board of Trustees?
Uh, I'll help you write it.
No, that's all right. I'll pass it among my colleagues, that's okay. I, I got feeling I know what you'd say. Okay, you said it already.
I mean, one of my thoughts on this whole thing is that when they, back in 2003, I believe, when they redid the zoning.
Yeah.
Was the concept of scrutinizing it, and making people have to go through more to expand their house, so you have control over how well people expand it. So, if you expand and you make it soft from the road, and you don't show the space, and you do it in good taste, and well, you can do it. And if you're gonna come and just go by zoning and do a big box, it looks ugly, it's less likely to do. I, that's in my mind, always, I always felt that way, back in 2003 when they did. Because back in 2003, that's when I moved to Armonk, when they changed the zoning, and the house I owned, I bought, and I could do much with it, and then I could do nothing with it, which is why I moved and rented it first, like 18 years ago.
Right, okay.
So, in my mind, I felt that way. And then, when I moved to Armonk, Armonk kind of did the same thing, where they brought in the zoning, they rezoned, and they did a lot of the, the same stuff with the same consulting firm. And then after they realized, after they did it after a couple of years, their boards were full of all these people that had to have all these meetings, because you couldn't do it. Everything you did wasn't issue.
I personally almost rather.
They rolled a lot of it back.
Yeah, I'd almost rather see our discretion to be limited within certain percentages.
Yeah, I, I'm, I, I do agree in, in.
Not above X percent, but within that percent, you have discretion.
Because what happens if they increase the standards from the town, and then we get that first?
Well, then you're always gonna get people wanting more.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so, so we, so we get that first new one, so you've built the house, and then we get that first new one where I want to put on a bigger deck, takes more property, so you've now gone past the 3600 or 38, whatever number they pick or whatever.
Minutes.
And then all of a sudden, they're saying, you know, we want a little bit of a variance, but you've already gone, you've already, it's like kind of creep.
Well, the number goes differently, but now as the zoning gets bigger, right now you're allowed more.
Right.
And you come in and ask for, you should be asking for less, right? You're hoping people aren't gonna come in and ask for any.
Let's finish up the meeting, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, thank you. Okay, uh, the last thing we have is the approval of the November minutes. Okay with that?
Yes.
Fine. Uh, Drew, I had to ask you about the December, January, February.
We'll get them taken care of. Either I'll be completing them myself, I'll work with Tara on that, or, um...
You can't leave until they're done.
Yeah, or I'll be working with the incoming associate who will.
Okay, as long as they don't.
I'll make sure they listen to the video, all that stuff.
Right, okay. All right, motion to adjourn.
Not yet. Can we just put it, could we put in the minutes a thank you for the time that, that Drew has provided, and her guidance and wisdom?
Yes, you guys.
You know, we.
You're my first board, and you're the only board that hasn't changed.
Well, you know what, I gotta tell you, when, when, where you're first, will always be special.
Thank you.
They're gonna go there.
Thank you for that. Okay, meeting is adjourned. Okay, good, okay.